For Monday, May the 20th, Carl, roll call please.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Bunsmann.
Here.
Slate Hansen.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsnus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leedson.
Here. Time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to approve last week's minutes, please.
So moved.
Motion, Rux, second by Slate Hansen. Any changes or corrections? If not, all in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have a request tonight for open forum from Brody Mueller to address the council. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. My name is Brody Mueller. I own Dakota Territory Brewing Company down on just a couple blocks away, down on Third and Main. I appreciate the opportunity to come and chat here tonight. So, we had a patio put in by the Downtown Association this past, well, I guess it was fall, which we really appreciate, but then I come to find out that we won't be able to use it with the current ordinances as they currently are, that ban outside alcohol in an outside eating area unless 51% of the fun, or of the sales from that establishment come from food. Now, we will have food. We are, you know, positioned right between the circus and lagers, and we don't want to recreate what they're, what they already do very well, so we'll have more smaller plate appetizer-y type stuff. What I'm here to talk about tonight, though, is just, I know that there's been some talk with the Downtown Association about changing this specific ordinance downtown-wide, and while I would support that, I'm more interested in just one building, and we could change the, or make an exemption, I guess. I don't know exactly how we want to phrase the ordinance, but that a owner of the business that holds a malt beverage manufacturing license would be exempt from that 51% food stipulation. So, that's, that's what I'm asking for, just so we can, patrons can drink the beer that I make in that building on the corner there, on a patio with a nice outdoor, outdoor space. So, that's what I'm proposing. I guess, questions or concerns? I don't know how this all works, so I'd be happy to...
Before we have any questions, Ron, could you just give us kind of an overview of the laws that applies and maybe how it's done elsewhere?
I can, I can try to give a general, a general census. The microbrewery, the manufacturing, malt beverage manufacturing license is one that's issued actually by the state, and I'm not sure, Brody, how that, how that license is issued, whether, and I have a call actually into the state folks to see how they do that, but whether, whether there's some requirement that you have the equipment, the brewery apparatus in place before it's issued, or whether that's something that can follow the issuance of the, of the microbrewery license. But in any event, the license identifies, like all of the, all of the alcohol licenses that are issued by the state and approved by the city, identifies as an on-sale premises. That's, that's the, that's the language you see in every one of these, is that it says that you can sell on sale on the licensed premises. What we see here with our, our particular ordinance and with other ordinances across the state, is they expand the licensed premises for purposes of the, of the sidewalk cafe or the outdoor dining to include then that area budding the property. So, and I haven't done an exhaustive review of other first-class municipalities. The ones I've looked at are Rapid City and Sioux Falls. I see that they do not have the 50% requirement. They do have a little bit, everybody has a little different way of doing that. Restaurant, or Rapid City, for example, includes among the licensed establishments or along, among the allowable establishments for the sidewalk cafe, they include bars in that, in that definition. Our ordinance does not. Ours is limited to establishments that appear to be more towards the dining aspect of it. So, with that, if there was some kind of exception, you'd be looking at an exception similar to what you see at 5A of section 46-135, where there is that exception for the businesses deriving more than 50% of its gross revenue from the sale of alcoholic beverages. You would need to potentially carve that up, and not only have that A1, but also an A2 that allowed for the malt beverage manufacturing license, if that was the direction you were inclined to go.
I've spent a lot of time downtown Rapid City, downtown Sioux Falls, and I know the intention there is to try to do two things. Help their people to be more profitable and establish a downtown atmosphere of people enjoying being downtown. And, you know, obviously, we're not going to vote on this tonight, but, you know, I've always been in favor of just anything that, that doesn't have a demonstrable downside, no reason to not do it, if it is what the downtown people want. I guess my first thought would be that you, you might find it easier to get the downtown behind you to change the entire ordinance rather than asking for a special exception. I don't, that's just off the top of my head. It might be easier to, to go that way, but, you know, that's not up to me. It's what, you know, what the consensus is, but just some general thoughts. Counsel?
I'm sorry, Jennifer?
Yeah, no, I had, I had talked to Brody about this previously, and I had, I had kind of written down several notes about questions, but as I'm thinking about it now, I don't think they're necessarily appropriate for this discussion, maybe after it's on the agenda, as a, as an ordinance, but the, the one thing that I was thinking about was, you know, specifically, like you said, the difference between bars and the brewing establishments, and whether we should just, you know, look at an ordinance that allowed all bars, or, or just as Brody's requesting. So, I, you know, I think for tonight that would be a proper part of our discussion, where we want to go with that.
You know, my comment was going to be that, you know, unless there's some reason why we would restrict outdoor operations to food operations, and I, and I can't think of one, quite honestly. I, I myself would be in favor of striking that paragraph, subparagraph A from the, from that portion of the, of the ordinance, and so that would be how I would be inclined to, to have a proceed, or at least start, if, if the rest of the council thinks that would be an appropriate direction.
Dave, you're in law enfor, oh, excuse me. You're in law enforcement. Is there any law enforcement issues on this?
Well, I've been trying to think of, think of one for down, there's always going to be some downside. People are going to always do something, but overall, I don't, I don't know of anything that, that would be a bad thing for outside dining.
Other comments, anyone?
Ron, what?
Go ahead.
I'm wondering what the date was.
13.
13, okay. So, because I was thinking, I remember when we dealt with this before, but I couldn't remember why we did just dining, if someone else remembers.
That was brought to us from the Downtown Association to allow their restaurants. Yep, it was brought from the Downtown Association.
Are you saying this was their language, Clint? They, they proposed with that restriction?
Yep.
That was kind of in line when the state was allowing some more liquor licenses for any establishment, anywhere that would serve half, or that would derive half of the profit. So, they just kind of piggybacked on that.
That's where the 50% comes in, because that went into the retail liquor license, where 50% of their sales had to be with food, and then the Downtown Association brought this forward to allow places like the Brass Kettle at the time, The Flame, a couple other restaurants downtown to allow that little jut-out area to allow for additional seating.
And honestly, I mean, not to hurt my own cause, but there is a, a section in there that says it needs to be marked off with, you know, a rope or a chain or something like that. None of that exists with The Flame or The Brass Kettle, which have been mentioned. I'm more than happy to do that, but if we're changing things, that might be something that either should be changed or, or just enforced, so.
I think I see that done elsewhere.
Yeah, that's, I think, where we need to, I thought when we did this in 13, we had made comparisons to other communities, and, and, you know, maybe those have changed over the years, and that's, that's possible. But this, what you're requesting is, is something that you don't need any dining, Dave. You, you just, just, you're outside, and this is public property, so there's, I think that's always our issue, is the right of way. So, I guess if someone wants to bring that forward, then we can have those discussions, but I think we need to revisit what we were talking about in 2013, and, and also look at how other communities are, are handling it, and then have people that are interested in downtown, let us know what their thoughts are.
I, I suggest you get together with Shelley and, and see if that's a better option than trying to carve out a brewery exemption?
Yeah, I have no problem doing this as a blanket.
So, I, again, that would be my suggestion as your next step, to get together with Shelley, and, and if the two of you could arrive on what downtown's request. We, we are usually very responsive to, to what the Downtown Association wants for itself, so I, I think that would be important.
I think you brought, bring up a, a great point, and that's the roped-off area. I think that was something that we required, and, and if this is going to go forward, I would think we would want that to happen, so.
I have no problem.
Meaning you want that in there still, or you want to remove that?
I would want it in there.
And I think this is a good time to take a look at this ordinance. Certain things have changed in the nature of businesses. You know, Aberdeen didn't even know what microbreweries were in 2013, so now there's two that I know of, and there could possibly be more, because places like Sioux Falls, Fargo, Rapid City, you're seeing a lot of them pop up. Brookings, Watertown, you're seeing a lot of them pop up.
I'm not necessarily wanting an exemption for microbrewery manufacturers, because I, I think you would, if you, if you, if we did that, would you sell other beer out in that area?
I don't plan on selling any beer but my own in my, at my establishment, so, just as a matter of business, you know.
Right, right.
And like I say, I, I was in my talks with, with other people on how to best approach this. I, I was counseled to make it as specific as possible, which is why the malt beverage manufacturer licensee is in there. It doesn't matter to me if it's blanket or, or specific.
If it's specific, you run into competition issues with other people who aren't actually brewing their own beer and...
And believe me, I would love to drink a beer outside at Slackers. That would be a great thing, so I'm in favor of it.
No, you're fine, you're fine. So, do other manufacturers sell, that sell their, their beer? Do they sell other beers?
Some do, some don't. Yeah, it's a matter of personal preference, I guess.
So, do you know more what to do now than when you got here?
Yes. While I have the floor, I am going to put this out here as well. What I would like to do, this is a secondary project, but the crosswalks downtown haven't been painted in some, quite some time. I want to paint them, but I want to paint them with art. So, what I have given you is a proposal, and on the back is examples of what I would like to do specifically on the corner of Third and Main. This is for Main, on Main Street, and then the mid-block on, between Third and Second. So, right by my building, between myself and the Sherman Apartments, and then also between Sammy's and Colorful Creations. So, in talking with, with people, I understand that I can't make any, I mean, obviously chalk is one thing, but I'd like to paint this. I'd like to do it every year, so that it doesn't look, look shabby when it goes through the, the winter months, and, and then they can, they can change every year as well. They don't have to be the same thing. I'm starting with two, but we have, I have a handful of artists that would help design. Obviously, the design approval would, would be with y'all, and, but those are, that's, that's what I want to do. It's, not only is a creative beautification piece for the city, it increases visibility as well, and isn't, encourages slower traffic. Someone asked, would it be a distraction? Well, hopefully, because they're crosswalks, so. So, you don't need to be screaming, and granted, this is, you know, we're talking about the only stop sign on Main Street is where I want to put these, but still, it's, it, any time that I can find a project that will benefit Aberdeen without costing a ton of money or infrastructure, I think that's a good thing. You know, Sioux Falls has the Art Walk Downtown, which is great, and while I would love that here, that's very expensive and very time-consuming. This is a quick and easy thing that if, I mean, ideally, I'd like to have these two done, or at least penciled in by the first downtown concert.
So, Robin, you got some, some quick thoughts on this?
Brody did talk to us about this a month or so ago, and, and the discussion really came down to, we got to make sure it meets our standards. The manual on uniform traffic control devices requires certain things. We're going to want to make sure that the outside is delineated by a white edge, and what's inside, I don't think is as big a deal, as long as it's probably something that's not objectionable, and you're going to make sure that's, that's the case. But the other thing is, it's got to be a contrast to the pavement, and so there are going to have to be certain things that we'd look at. We don't want it to be in a brown-tone, gray-tone type thing. It's going to have to be something that would stand out with reds, yellows, that type of thing. But those are the two things that we'd be looking at right now, is to make sure that we've got a delineation between the pavement and that crosswalk, and then the color contrast.
And Brody, I would, I would, you know, not that we don't want to make decisions on these things, but we, obviously, this is going to be something that the down, it would be all over downtown, so the Downtown Association would...
And I realize right now that I have a letter of support from Shelley on this issue that I failed to bring to you, but would love to email that over.
Okay, and, yeah, and, you know, you'd want to have it set up so that they could have approval of design and, and so forth, so. Robin, I don't know, where are we in this as far as you're concerned? If, if he wanted to pursue this in relation to your needs, what would he do?
Well, he would have to bring in something that shows kind of the design. If they can rough a sketch out for us to let us know.
On the backside of the sheet I handed out are the two sketches, but we can colorize that.
Yeah, the, the bottom one is, is obviously a, a black and white deal. We'd like to see what kind of you've got in mind for coloration, things of that nature, and then we'll have to take a specific look at the MUTCD, just to make sure we're not missing something as far as what other things might be required, but...
Then, this council will have to decide for itself, I guess, whether it, it wants control over the, the message. So, you know, obviously, if you go through the downtown, you know, they would make a, a recommendation, but if the majority of this council didn't like the picture you were going to put on the street, it's not going to happen.
Sure, no, and I understand.
Okay.
That would be my question, is who's going to determine what's objectionable?
I, I would, I guess I would say off the top of my head that if we're going to do this, that the final design should have to get an up or down vote out of the council.
I think you, you look at our model ordinances. Robin has the authority.
That's what I was thinking.
I was thinking too. I was going to...
You want that all to yourself, Robin, or do you want to pass it off on...
I think I'd share.
All right. I, I think it's reasonable, some, something that significantly different downtown, you know, that's what, kind of what we're here for. Okay?
Okay. Lastly, we hold One Million Cups every, every Wednesday at the Capitol Theater at 9:00 AM, and would be happy to see any members of, of council there. This week, we are talking with the organizers of the aviation show, the first aviation show, so you can come down and, and hear about that. On Facebook, we have all the schedules, so. That's all I have, so I yield my time, and thank you so much, everyone, for your participation.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next on our agenda, consent calendar. Just two items, A and B.
Second.
Motion, Ronain, and second, or motion Bunsnus, second by Rux. All in favor of approving those two, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Under new business, Chief Meister is here to give us the 2018 Annual Fire and Rescue Department Report. Chief?
Well, I was, yes. Well, it's going to take a process. I, I'll just, I'll bail on it. Thank you for allowing me to come in and visit with you. We had a, quite a busy year. We were up 659 calls from 17. I don't know. Probably not. We'll just go. Out of those 659 calls, there are 227 more fire calls and 432 EMS calls, which is 11.3 calls a day, which is quite a few calls for us. With that, our response times from, do you guys all have the report correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, as you can see, our, our times are right in standards with the NFPA standards, where our response times are going en route and to the arrival. So, we are meeting all the standards for that. There is some calls on the next page where they're probably alarming to a few of you on the, how many false alarms that we have. 288, and majority of them are malfunctions of alarm systems, sprinkler systems, or, you know, an example would be burnt popcorn at a dormitory. Another business that has alarm system where the contractor might be working on the system, didn't call into the alarm company and cancel us, so. There's a lot of those, and I think it's probably the highest it's ever been, so at some point, I probably am going to come to this body again and ask for an ordinance change of some sort, so we give them, you know, there's someplace we go to 10 times a year, 15 times a year easily, so I do think there's a, a time to change that, so we give them maybe four or three freebies, and after that, we start charging. I think we got to do something, because it's kind of getting out of control, so. EMS-wise, we ran, like I said, 300, or 432 more calls. Just our, our numbers are, are quite high, to be honest with you, so. Just a lot of the routine calls. There's really nothing that sticks out, fire or ambulance, what the reason for the numbers are going up, besides a few of the false calls, but our fire numbers are probably right in line where they need to be from years past, maybe a little bit up, but, you know. Any questions on anything that...
Would the, would the charge for false alarms, is that something you and Lynn can do, or is that an ordinance change?
That would be an ordinance change.
Okay, all right. So, is that something you think you'll, you'll bring to us, Lynn, or you're still thinking about?
He has a more, he has a better breakout of all those false calls than before. I say that we're actually going to do that. I've done it in another municipality where we allow five false calls per year, and then anything over five, we started billing. So, I've actually worked with that, but I want to see a better breakout, exactly where these are coming from, before I say that I'm going to go that route.
Yep, and I can give you that documentation for it.
To the degree that we think it is.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll go back maybe five to eight years and get all those numbers, so we can, and break it down easier that way, too, so.
Dana?
Yeah, thank you for the report, Chief. The only thing I would make comment on is that I would like to see the previous years' information, so we can make a comparison.
And I have that here, and it, it didn't make the binder.
Okay.
Anyway. That's an easy email to you, but I have it from 2018.
Please, please do. Thank you.
Just from 20, here's from year 2000. The current, we're up 2010 calls, so we doubled in 18 years, so.
Quick question on your firefighter school, fire and rescue schools.
Yes, that is going great. They will take tests here in July, and hopefully all graduate with being paramedics, and then there'll be five of them coming on the shift for that. Come September, we'll probably put another six through it again and keep rolling through, but that has really worked out well, so that's, that's probably been one of the biggest highlights for the, the year, so.
That's a really good idea on your part, your, your department.
And obviously, we're short-staffed, and with the, the call volume, the staff we have over there is amazing. They're great, so they do a great job every day, so.
Okay, anybody? I, I was impressed with those response times, Chief. I know from experience that if you're involved in an emergency, minutes seem like hours and seconds seem like minutes.
Correct.
And I thought you mentioned that there's a standard. What is the standard?
It depends on different scenarios of the fire. Anywhere from, it goes by minutes, so, or 5:20, which would be, there's some of them, you have 80 seconds to get turned out, to get going, 240 seconds to get your first truck on scene. So, you, you add the two together, and then it's different scenarios of how the initial fire alarm and to different sizes of structures that give you more seconds, so. But we're right where the, the National NFPA Standards at, so.
I think those are very good numbers, Chief.
Thank you. That's, that credits the staff that we have to do that, so.
You know, I, I live on a street where I hear sirens quite a bit, and sometimes multiple times in a day, and this kind of goes to your staffing, of course, at 12 calls a day. How does your staffing level feel? I know you're short. If you were full staff, would this be alleviated, or, because you sit there and say, you know, you are kind of pushing what your folks can do, especially if...
Absolutely. Obviously, the more bodies you have on shift will help that, but they've, it hasn't been probably real fun for them, but they're getting the job done. They're doing it professionally, so.
Okay, anybody else? Chief?
I would just like to say thanks, and the Fire Department does a great job. You know, a lot of calls that we go on together, and their staff are kind of incredible. They do an excellent job. We had several critical incidents last year. They're there to help us with those, and staff just do an amazing job. You know, if you remember the flood, their command staff ran the Emergency Operations Center, did a great job with the briefing, so they're highly trained, great to work with, and professional people, so I just want to say thanks from our department to theirs.
Jennifer, do you have a comment?
I, I do. The good intent calls, can you tell us what that is?
Yes. And I apologize that we didn't put the breakdown of all those.
Got a cat in a tree?
Nope. They would be dispatched and canceled en route. Smoke would be a dryer vent that somebody drove by and seen it was, you know, steam. Yeah, it's just wrong address, something like that, so, you know, the dispatch and cancel then route is 23 of that number, so.
Oh, 51. So, so they're a type of false alarm, but they're...
Correct. Yep, and I, and I will print this off, and I'll email it to all of you, so you have a better idea of what, what the number is. Since this is kind of our first report put together, it, it was a learning curve, so now we, I'll know what to put in next year, so.
It's very good, though.
So, how's the new truck, the new half-million-dollar truck working?
Half a million? Got half of it, Fred. Great. Yeah, I seen a, they put it up the other day on the Fifth Avenue Apartments. You know, they went to the roof of it there, and the old truck would have never made it that far, so. 32 foot's a pretty big added, you know, so, no, it's very, it'll, it'll be here for the future, so. That was the best thing. We designed it for the future, so it's going to have to be here 20, 25 years, so.
Great.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot. Thanks every day. Next item of business, item B from Lynn, relating to allowing an antenna on a city building. Lynn?
Okay, thank you. This is a host agreement with Lica Geo Systems Incorporated to allow them to put a GPS GNSS receiver antenna on fire hall number one. We currently have our own antenna. However, this could act as a backup if in fact ours would fail, and at the same time, by allowing it to be placed on our building, we can get an annual payment of $1,250. I renegotiated this after I typed this up originally. I asked for more money, and so I only had a thousand on here, but I got 250 additional dollars.
Woo! Did you get a commission on that?
I'm waiting for one in the federal building.
Not coming.
So, I'm asking for your approval for this, because our antenna only does basically corporate limits, and this antenna would go 50 miles out. So, if we ever had, doing a GIS plating or anything like this, it could be beneficial to us sometime in the future. We do approve.
Second.
Motion, Ronain, second by Olson. Any questions on this? It's to Lica Geo Systems. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next is Section 5311, fiscal year 2019, Grant Amendment, South Dakota Department of Transportation. Rich?
Thank you. I'm here to ask the council to authorize...
Um, I'm here to ask the council to authorize city manager to sign, um, a grant amendment with SDDOT for fiscal year twenty nineteen to allow RideLine to submit qualifying administrative costs for reimbursement at eighty-two point eight-one percent and our operating costs for reimbursement at fifty-one point seven-six percent. Uh, the amendment increases the amount we will, we will receive, um, by about thirty thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. Uh, the grant is authorized, grant amendment is authorized by the FTA and administered through SDDOT.
He'll probably renegotiate that and get that up to sixty or seventy percent.
Oh, actually, this was money that was found. So it, basically, it amounts to an extra month of payments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, uh, Ronan, second by Bunsonis. Questions, anyone? All in favor of approving, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we have our water treatment plant manager here to ask for approval of, uh, proposals for water treatment facility plans.
Yes, um, we interviewed three companies that submitted, um, uh, proposals to do a facility plan for the water plant. Um, we, in the interview process, we kinda went with, decided HR Green is who we would like to go try, uh, to work with. Um, so, um, they have the amount, plus we also have a contingency, because depending on what we find, we might need to go a little different direction or have more in there, so. That's why we're asking for ninety-eight thousand dollars for facilities plan.
Move approval. Second.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Rux. Questions on, uh, this at all? All in favor, then, of, uh, approving the acceptance of that proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
So there was an interview of Bob, Lynn, and who else?
Robin.
Okay.
Uh, the next item is for Robin, a payment request, uh, for, uh, concrete. Robin?
Payment request number two, uh, this is actually their first, uh, few weeks of work. Uh, the spring, obviously, was not kind to getting these projects underway, but they have gotten quite a bit of work done. They're asking for sixty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the work that they've completed so far.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Bunsonis. Questions, anyone? Uh, Carl, roll call the payment to CWF Masonry, sixty-one thousand, two twenty-nine.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Payment approved. Item F, uh, you have a, uh, list of bills submitted for payment, uh, tonight and I'd entertain a motion to pay those.
Question?
Pardon?
Could I, question first?
Let's get a motion first.
Okay.
Second by you, uh, councilmember Olson.
Sure.
Question from you.
Oh, uh, Parkview Nursery, that, uh, streetscape, is that a Downtown Association responsibility?
Yes, um, we have some money that we've been holding for the Downtown Association, uh, as part of the streetscape project that we did back in two thousand and three, I think it was. Um, we've held some of that money and as they do different projects downtown, then we make the payments for it. So it's, it's like an account that we hold for them.
Okay.
Good question.
Any other questions on the bills? Uh, roll call then Carl to pay them.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson. Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, item G is the payroll and, uh, before we entertain a motion, Carl, you wanna explain why there's a payroll adjustment on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, while we were doing payroll in, in the Human Resources Department, one of the employees was entered at the incorrect rate, so this is a catch-up to get them to the rate they should've been at per hour.
All right, including that, then, also the pay period, April twenty-eighth to May eleventh, City Share of Social Security, Old Age Survivors, Insurance, Retirement, Health and Life.
Moved. Second.
Motion Lunsman, second by Bunsonis. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Lynn?
Okay, I have a couple items I'd like to highlight from the city manager's report. Uh, the recommended two thousand and twenty promotion fund allocation will be one million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand. Uh, this is an increase of twenty-nine thousand dollars from last year. Uh, the deadline for applications is this Friday, May twenty-fourth. And then on June thirtieth, Carl will provide a worksheet for the requests, so you can see how the numbers fall out. Uh, in addition, the Police Department will do their annual report for two thousand and twenty on June tenth. And I appreciate your clarification in the sale of buildings. I was only kidding when I was talking about a commission, but then again, the public may not understand that, so. So I appreciate the clarification from the mayor. And that's all I have at this time.
Anything, David?
Uh, um, we didn't ask for the chief's, uh, thoughts on the outdoor, um, beer issue, and I hope that you're ready whenever that comes back to us.
So there are a few things originally when we researched this and things that I were concerned about at the time was the open container in public and how that intersected with state law. You know, I'm, I'm gonna go back and research how we kind of arrived, but that, there are some things, Adam Altman was a city attorney at the time and properties had unique, um, unique design. And, you know, so if we're looking at this, probably the biggest thing is just the access, you know, the, um, how the outdoor place is constructed and the ability for people that aren't involved in this, you know, how they can move through that area. So, I'll, I'll do some research on it, absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Lander, uh, in your, uh, report that you provided to us, you did provide us, uh, confirmation that the repairs were made, uh, to the library recently. I, I guess I'd ask, uh, did they hold up during this, uh, recent monsoon?
I did not receive any calls, so I thought that was good news. I don't know if they're completely done because one of the air intakes, even though they got the styrofoam in there to create a different angle for runoff, I don't know if that's been fiberglassed yet. You know, Robin?
Not sure.
And when I talked to Shirley, I was so happy about them getting the sheetrock done and getting the caps done. I forgot to ask about that, but I will call tomorrow.
The other thing that I think the public ought to know is, uh, is, is who's bearing the expense of these repairs?
That's my understanding would be quest engineer, I mean, quest construction.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Remley, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.